Got it, Ken?
Commissioner's Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on September the 10th, 2019. 10:00 AM, Commissioner's Court Room, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag. Commissioner Berry will lead us.
Lead us now with me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for the concern and wisdom that you bestow upon us as we do meaningful work for the citizens of Brazos County. Please keep in mind and watch over our EMS and first responders and our men and women in the military here at home and abroad who, whose work allows us to enjoy the freedoms we, we do. We ask all this in your name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will go to number three, presentation and discussion. Presentation and discussion of the 2020 census, issues and potential solutions for Brazos County by Dan Rush. Dan?
Thank you. Judge Peters, Commissioner's Court, thank you for having me today. I'm waiting for the screen.
Let me give you that.
So, you've asked me to come to talk to you today a little bit about what's going to happen with the 2020 census. Some people find it interesting that a MPO director has suddenly become the expert on the 2020 census for the county, but it means about $4 million for our organization and additional funds if we go over the 200,000 threshold. So, that's why I'm kind of been really busy talking about the census a lot lately. So, the census data said it's April 1, 2020. There was some questions about the citizenship question being asked, but that went through the Supreme Court. They heard the oral arguments and they decided that they would not allow the citizenship question to move forward. The administration, by the Census Bureau's own admission, had other ways to collect the data anyway on citizenship, so they really didn't see a need for the citizenship question. If the citizenship question had remained, about 6.5 billion people would not have filled out the census form, so it would have caused quite a bit of an issue for the census. And there was some kind of misinformation going around about the census question, particularly the Census Bureau is not allowed to release individual records until 72 years after the census is completed. So, if you do the math, 72, 18 is typically the youngest that somebody would fill out the census. So, by that time, they're probably not still around when they would release the census.
I don't plan on being around.
I plan on being around, but...
I don't. I don't.
But anyway, the Census Bureau employees have to swear a lifetime oath to respect the respondent information. It's a felony if they do release any of the information with a fine of up to $250,000 or a five-year prison term, or both. But the census information is very important for distributing all different kinds of federal funds. There's community development block grants, or in my case, transportation funds that become available to us based on the population. So, it's about $600 billion annually that goes out to the states through federal distribution formula that's based on population. And for the state of Texas alone, it's about a little over $43 billion a year. So, it does make quite a bit of difference to make sure that we have the census filled out properly. And for us in Brazos County, the most important question is going to be the where do you live question. And it's where were you living on April 1, 2020? And then they are even going to take the unprecedented step of telling people how to provide a complete street address. And that's the direct quote you see there from the Census Bureau is provide a street address if you can. Don't give us a rural route. Don't give us a P.O. box. We really need a street address of some kind. Now, because one of our issues, and we're going to talk about this in a second, is students, I wish they would have said, please tell us where you have your Amazon packages delivered or your pizza delivered, and we would have had no issues. So, what's really important for us, because we have such, we have both Texas A&amp;M and Blinn College, we have a very large student population. So, they're making it very clear that if you're a college student living away from home, you are counted at your on-campus or off-campus residence where they live and sleep most of the time. So, it doesn't, it's not what does your driver's license say? It's where did you live on April 1? Where do you live most of the year? And that would either be Bryan College Station or somewhere in Brazos County. If they're living in student housing, such as a dormitory or residence hall, they are counted at that residence hall, and that information comes directly from Texas A&amp;M University to the Census Bureau. So, on-campus students won't get a census form, but all of the off-campus students will. We're going to talk about why that's important in a minute. So, in 2010, if you look at where we had significant undercounts, these are less than 70, well, in some cases, it's less than 60% response rate to the census. You can see there's quite a bit of nonrespondents in and around the Texas A&amp;M campus, but it does extend to some socioeconomic challenged communities in Bryan as well. And in reality, even though the Census Bureau will tell you that it was not that big of an issue, quietly, they will tell you they think students were undercounted by at least 20% in the last census. So, thinking about how large the population is for both Texas A&amp;M and Blinn together, a 20% undercount is pretty disastrous for us here in Brazos County. So, in addition to that, the Census Bureau calls these census tracts where we have low response rates the hardest-to-count communities, and the darker the color of blue, the more likely it is that they're going to get a very low response rate, or what they call a male non-response rate. And again, you can see where we're having the biggest issues with getting a complete census count for the 2020 census. It's going to be in those hardest-to-count communities, the socio-economically disadvantaged neighborhoods, the student population, et cetera. So, it's very important that we try to reach out to those communities. So, the Census Bureau is doing a couple of things to improve the census response rate. Each census form will have a pre-assigned ID attached to it. That ID can then be used to go onto the Internet and fill out the census form on a computer, an iPad, a cellphone. They also have on the census packet that they will get a direct line to the Census Assistance Center. So, if they don't have access to a computer, they can call that number, and with that pre-assigned ID number, they can fill out the census with someone on the phone from the Census Bureau. So, they're doing a lot more to try to get out there and, and get people to respond. Now, you don't have to have the ID code when you're doing it. It just helps the Census Bureau keep better records and make sure they're not having to do a lot of count to reduce the number of double countings, but it is provided, and it makes it a lot easier if people use the ID code. What's important for us, however, is that if somebody doesn't fill out the census form, they send out what are called canvassers. And canvassers typically arrive in the community no earlier than June, but typically, they arrive in July or August. So, if we have a 60% non-response rate from college students, and they all go home at the end of April, and the Census Bureau comes to count on them, they're going to knock on their door, and nobody's going to answer, and they're not going to get a response. So, it's very important that we try to do everything that we can to reach out to the people that are not going to be here when the canvassers show up. So, the schedule for the census is, is that they have to tabulate everything and provide the results to the president in December. The results will be made public in 2021. Then the questions start to happen about what's going to happen with the redistricting. Are they going to use citizens? Are they going to use full population? I don't know. Every time we've had a census, there's been threats of lawsuits. So, will there be lawsuits? I don't know. But it's just a question that, that comes out there. And just a reminder, the larger the populations means more federal funds for Brazos County. So, it's very important that we do that. So, there's two ways that we can potentially get a better count here or an accurate count. We've talked about forming an informal census task force. The Census Bureau has something called a complete count committee. It's actually recognized by the Census Bureau, and if anybody in Brazos County had a question and we had a complete count committee, the Census Bureau would direct them to somebody in Brazos County to answer their questions. So, it's more of a peer-to-peer exchange and answering questions about the census as opposed to talking to somebody at the Census Bureau office in Dallas or even in Washington, D.C. If you decide to go the formal complete count committee, the only downside that I can see to it is that the Census Bureau requires you to go to a two-hour training session to be on the complete count committee. I've been through it. It's like watching paint dry on the wall. Very vanilla subject, but on the nice side, the Census Bureau Division Office in Dallas will come to Brazos County and conduct the, the training here as opposed to us having to go there. What they do, or what they suggest for a census committee composition is usually the staffs from affected agencies that would be impacted by the Census Bureau provide staff support to the committee. We're also suggesting that we work with the marketing staff from local jurisdictions. I've made this presentation to the City of Bryan, City of College Station. Their marketing staffs are already working together to try to improve the census information. But they suggest that we have representatives that are respected by citizens in the hardest-to-count communities to participate on the census committee. We're also suggesting having student reps from Texas A&amp;M and Blinn to reach out to the students. Local elected officials are required to be on it. It's the mayor's or their designees. There'd probably be somebody from the Commissioner's Court that would serve on that, on that group. And a locally respected and recognized face who kind of serves as the chair and does the guest speaker circuit. So, we're looking for somebody that's immensely popular in Bryan College Station.
And if there are citizens out here that want to join, what do you suggest they do?
Citizens that are interested in participating in the complete count committee, especially if they represent the hardest-to-count communities, would be more than welcome to serve on the committee. They would just need to reach out to me, because for some reason, I'm taking the lead on trying to get a complete count committee put together for Brazos County. I will tell you that the Council of Governments has a complete count committee for the entire valley, but not for the individual jurisdictions. And in fact, some of the other counties have already formed a complete count committee. So, we're a little bit behind the curve, as it were, on that. The duties are to develop some kind of unified message to encourage participation. The Census Bureau is using the theme "Shape Your Future," and then it has a little arrow to point to where you open up your census booklet. Really tricky promo there. They would develop all the marketing and promotional materials with specific, specific materials to reach the hardest-to-count communities. Now, when Texas A&amp;M did their Thursday football operations, they actually wrote a student video, and the students told other students how Thursday football would work in terms of class schedules, football game, et cetera. And the students responded by saying, almost 90% of them who heard the message heard it through that video. So, we think doing a student video at Blinn and Texas A&amp;M would be a great way to reach out to the students on the census. Accept any and all invitations to speak to community groups and then do outreach to local media, who I'm glad to see are here today. And then, what's the timeline? Well, we really need to get the committees formed as soon as possible. The chamber has talked about taking the lead in trying to put it together, but they haven't so far, so I'm kind of leading the charge to try to get it put together. Begin the formal outreach process in October by speaking to civic groups. We're already scheduled Thursday night. I'm going to be meeting with a group of about 500 students at Texas A&amp;M to talk about the census and transportation issues. They got me there to talk about transportation, but I'm going to talk to them about the census, too. They don't know that yet, but that's all right. Find speaking opportunities in all the hardest-to-count communities to try to reach out and let them know that they're available. We, we propose doing strong outreach two weeks out from the census day. It's what we like to call FaceTime, where we take every opportunity to peer on every television station, every radio station, every newspaper, anywhere that we can get out to get the message out that we really need people to fill out the census. And then continue the outreach until the end of April, when the students leave and the canvassers begin to arrive in the area. Make sure we answer questions throughout until the canvassers complete their task in August. So, everybody keeps asking me, so why is the MPO director so interested in that? Well, if we go over the 200,000 population, we become what's called a transportation management area. And that's big for us because it means more operating dollars for my budget, but it also means that we get about another four to four and a half million dollars just for transportation projects. It's a new category that's not available to us when you're under 200,000. When you go over 200,000, there's another category of funds that TechDOT has that is available to MPOs that are 200,000 or greater. So, we would become a part of that group, and they've estimated, TechDOT has estimated we would get between four and four and a half million dollars if we go over the 200,000 population threshold. The other big change is that transit funding goes down from 100% subsidy to 75%. So, it's about $660,000 that is going to have to be made up from Bryan College Station and potentially Brazos County to pay for transit services in the, in the region. So, how does all of this work? Well, you know, everybody talks about the Brazos County population. We were 194 in the last census. We've grown a lot, so it's easy. We're over 200,000. Well, the Census Bureau uses what's called an urbanized area as opposed to the whole county, which is our entire planning area. So, the urbanized area population was 171,000 in the last census. If you add up the existing populations for Bryan and College Station, we're really close to the 200,000 population threshold. However, the way that the urbanized area is designated, some portions of College Station and Bryan don't meet the density requirement, so it wouldn't be inside the urbanized area even though they're part of the cities. So, we're really close to the 100, the 200,000 population, but we want to make sure that we get over it, and we'll find that out with the 2020 census. And I didn't want to take up too much of your time, so I've shortened this presentation. I'll take questions if you have.
Appreciate you taking the lead. It's critical that we get an accurate count, so keep spreading the word.
Dan, outside of the student, whoops, turn on. Outside of the student area that's the hardest to count, what other areas of the community did you identify that we need to focus on? Because we've got more time to focus on them. They will be here.
Right.
And we can work on that. But the, the critical issue is, is by the time the census workers get here, if they don't mail in, then April 1st comes and goes, and those people are no longer available.
So, going back to those maps that I had originally shown, it's primarily minority communities, in particular Hispanic communities, which don't have a lot of trust in the federal government that they expect to have some issues with. Some of the other socioeconomic areas of Brazos County that are a little bit disadvantaged would be some of the other ones that would, we can be considered hardest-to-count communities. So, there is a fairly significant population that we need to reach out to that live in Brazos County year-round as opposed to just the students.
Historically, blacks and Latinos, Commissioner, are the ones, blacks and Latinos, so...
And it, and it's my hope, because I've been told that I could ask Irma to give me contact information for representatives from those communities so that I can get them either on the complete count committee or at least informed about what's going on.
I'm happy to assist. As a matter of fact, I'm going to hand you my card because I do want to be involved and assist in any way I can. Not only, I think it's important that we realize that a lot of our federal funds are affected, not just MPO.
Correct.
And I know that's your personal concern, but I'm concerned about indigent care.
Yes.
The senior citizens, the mills on wheels, services that people in our community have access to, but the funding is so small, it limits who we can serve.
And, and to your, directly to your point, Commissioner Colley, the census information is what drives the funding formula for all of those programs that you've just talked about.
Exactly, and that's where I'm going with this. We, we hurt ourselves if we don't do our part, so you can count on me. I want to be involved.
You had mentioned, and saw your presentation at the Legislative Affairs Committee of the Chamber. Is that the group with the Chamber that you're referring to as far as trying to put things together?
Yes. And, and the Chamber's interested in helping out, maybe not so much as serving on the committee, as providing funding if we should need it for some kind of outreach effort. For example, other communities count on public service announcements, but the Chamber's willing to pay for buying advertising time to make sure that we get our census information out there.
You mentioned funding, and that's the one thing you haven't said anything about. But tell us how much funding is available. I'd like everybody to understand the situation.
The amount of funding that's available is really zero.
Exactly. Now, when in the history of census in this United States of America, this great country, have we not put some funding into taking of census and the process?
This, there's always been funding available to the Census Bureau, and the Census Bureau only does whatever they, they make available, generic materials, and that's it.
Exactly.
So, we really need something that's dedicated directly to the, the communities we're trying to reach.
I agree. It's a real shame.
Okay. Dan, thank you, and thank you for your involvement.
Thank, thank Commissioner Berry. She's the one who said, hey, if you think it's important, go for it.
Yes.
And it is.
It is important.
It is.
It is.
Believe it or not, the county plays a big role in, in that. I want to give you my card.
I'll, I'll stay until after.
Thank you.
And I would be willing to bet you that as a, even though we've grown a lot since 2010, the rapid growth of university enrollment and Blinn College enrollment has probably grown faster than the community at large has grown over the last 10 years.
That's correct.
And I think that's, that's a real critical issue, is, is making sure that we get students who are here on April 1st to say, yes, that's where I want to be counted.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will move on and consider and take action on Agenda Items 4 through 21. Number four is approval of following job description.
With approval A.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to dis, to approve A. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is payment authorization to Cone Inc. in the amount of $553.28 for after-hours elevator work for the Expo Complex, March the 11th, 2019. Scope of work was not covered in the contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is purchasing request by the Commissioner's Court to declare surplus, surplus property a salvage in accordance with the local government code 263.152 and authorize destruction or other disposal of, for the items not sold to the public.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is award of bid CIP 19-517 light pole replacement for Brazos Center and Brazos County Health Department parking lots. Recommended award is Environmental Lighting Solutions LLC.
Move approval.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight is approval of license agreement with time clock plus for the time clock portion of the ERP system.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is requesting approval of a memorandum of understanding for Brazos County, Bryan Independent School District and Brazos County Health District for the administration of the Ambus, Ambibus Program.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
I just think that's a great collaboration between two local government entities in order to provide something that we wouldn't normally have. So, I want to, everybody who's involved with that, I want to tell them thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is acceptance of the following roads into the Brazos County Roads Maintenance System. Roadways and roadway drainage structures are in compliance with the Brazos, Brazos County Subdivision Regulation, sites located Precinct 1. Move approval.
A, A through B, A through D.
Let's, let's bring them all in.
Yes.
Sounds good.
I don't want to leave anybody out.
That's right.
Did I get a second?
We're going to cover.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve A through D.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is consider and take action on the Wixon Creek Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct road board for a 1-inch waterline crossing under Bird Pond, 3,780 feet southwest of Tonka Way Lake, Road Sites located Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is consider and take action of the FWP Holdings LLC permit to install temporary 10-inch polyurethane waterline within and along the right-of-way of Long Trussell Road, a distance of 11,850 foot, sites located Precinct 2.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is Commissioner's Court minutes for the following dates.
Move approval A through K.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A through K. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY 18/19, 49.1 through 49.5.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is adoption of the Brazos County Fiscal Year Budget, Brazos County Budget for Fiscal Year Ending September 30, 2020, and we'll need to go through the amendments to the proposed budget. So, First Amendment is Commissioner's Court and Auditor's Office reallocation of the funds by decreasing the general fund contingency $7,399 and increasing salary and wages by $6,010 and increasing the benefits by $1,389. This will have a net increase of $7,399 to the auditor's budget and decrease 7399 to the Commissioner's Court contingency budget. The change was approved and ordered by District Judges, August 15, 2019.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number two is grant and Commissioner's Court reallocation of funds by decreasing the TJJD Grants salary and wages benefits with net increase of $795 and increasing the general fund contingency with a net increase of $795. This will restructure the positions to the adjusted TJJD Grant FY 2020. positions to the adjusted TJJD grant FY 2020 percentage distribution.
Move approval.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number three, forfeiture fund, to recognize revenue in the amount of $4,498 and increasing minor acquisitions by $4,498. This will have a net increase of $4,498 to the forfeiture fund for an additional revenue received.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number four is Sheriff's Administration, reallocation of funds by decreasing salary and wages and benefits in Sheriff's Administration, $2,913 and $673 respectively, in the SOCSISD Security Budget, increase salary and wages benefits by $2,913 and $673 respectively. This would decrease the Sheriff's Administration budget by a net of $3,586 and increase SOCSISD Security Department by $3,586.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is TJJD Grant and Commissioners Court, restructuring of TJJD Grant regarding the pre-audit YEP and PACT computer contracts for FY 20.
Thank you. Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six, Commissioners Court, reallocation of funds by decreasing the general fund contingency and increasing the repairs and maintenance of $51,066. This will have a net increase of $51,066 to the Commissioners Court non-departmental budget, and this will row funding into the FY 20 for the HVAC control system project at the jail detention center.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is Commissioners Court and General Capital Fund, reallocation of funds by decreasing the general fund contingency and increasing the capital improvement fund. This will have a net increase of $40,480 to the general capital improvement fund.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight is County Clerk Archival Fund, reallocation of funds by decreasing department support, $170,530, and increasing contractual services, $170,530 for the County Clerk Archival Project.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is Commissioners Court and Court Support, reallocation of funds by decreasing general fund contingency, $500,000, and increasing professional services by $500,000. This will have a net increase of $500,000 for court support, civil budget, and a decrease, $500,000 in Commissioners Court contingency budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
That's mandated costs.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Then, number...
It's number 10. May I, do we have to read them off?
No, I'm not gonna do that.
Okay.
But it, number 10 is to remove this county cell phone allowance from all positions to comply with HB 944, county issued cell phones replace allowances.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is Fleet Services to reclassify, class code 2595, position 1, from hourly staff to salary staff.
Move... Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is Commissioners Court Facility Services, reallocation of funds by decreasing the general fund contingency by $54,752 and increasing the repair and maintenance by $54,572.
Move approval.
Is that, I think those figures were transposed there. It looks like 5, 54,752 and 54,572.
If you add them there, that's the 54,752. It's correct.
Yeah, but the second, the second time it's listed, it's listed with the 5 and the 7 and the...
Reverse order.
Okay.
Somebody was dislegging.
Okay.
The hundreds and the tens column.
I guess the 572...
Well, that's the problem.
It looks like 572 is the correct number. Do you know? Does that look correct?
54,752?
54,752. I think that would be correct.
Okay, all right. So, the second time it's listed here, it's, we're going to 54,752.
I think that's correct.
Well, 50, yeah.
This will have a net decrease...
They are minus 54.
This will have a net decrease to the county commissioner's budget of $54,752 and a net increase of $10,094 to facility services budget and a net increase of $44,658 to Brazos County, Brazos Centers budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13, reallocation of funds by decreasing capital outlay and increasing departmental support. This will have a net increase of $18,319 to Commissioners Court contingency budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is Juvenile Administration and TJJD Grants is reallocation of funding for two positions appropriated in the general fund for grant fund, decrease salary and wages, $49,613, and $26,824 benefit in the general fund, increase the TJJD basic probation grant, $49,613, and in the salary and wages and $26,824 in benefits. This will have a zero net effect on the total Brazos County budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is Commissioners Court General Capital Improvement Fund for Constable Precinct 3 is reallocation of funds by decreasing the general fund contingency and increasing the minor acquisition and capital outlay, which will have a net increase of $3,330 in Commissioners Court non-departmental and a net increase of $41,000 in the general capital improvement budget. The V8 charge will be provided to Precinct 3 as an additional vehicle to the fleet. Unit 94 will be kept for the fleet in the, as a reserve vehicle.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is County Extension Agency, reallocation of funds by decreasing the benefits and increasing departmental support. This will have a net decrease of $22,920 in the County Extension Agency budget and a net increase in the, of $22,920 in the Commissioners Court contingency.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is County Records Management Commissioners Court, reallocation of funds by decreasing salary and wages and benefits and increasing departmental support, which will have no effect on the budget.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is Commissioners Court Sheriff's Administration in Jail, reallocation of funds by decreasing the general fund contingency by, in the amount of $58,578 and increasing salary and wages by $35,108, and increasing benefits by $23,470. This will have a net increase of $58,578 to Sheriff's Administration jail budget and decreasing Commissioners Court contingency by the same amount. This will create a booking clerk for the jail division.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 19 is County Clerk Records Management Fund, reallocation of funds by increasing, increasing use of reserves and increasing salary and wages and benefits by $26,710. This will have a net increase of $27,710 to the County Clerk Records Management budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20 is Sheriff's Administration Jail, reallocation of merit award by decreasing the Correctional Health Professional EMT Class Code 1510, position 3, Group 17, Step 6, Group 17, Step 5, and increasing Correctional Health Professional EMT Class Code 1510, position 1, from Group 17, Step 4, to Group 17, Step 5. This change will have no, no effect on the Sheriff's Administration jail budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Let's see, now I think we, we can now, I need a motion to adopt the proposed budget with these changes included for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2020.
I make the motion that we adopt these changes.
Second.
The budget and the, the changes.
Budget and changes, that's correct.
Okay.
The whole, the whole banana.
The whole banana, as Steve Hall...
Right. Okay, motion made and seconded to adopt the county budget. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Now, we move to number 16 is a resolution 19-023, levying tax rate for Brazos County for the tax year of 2019. And that's where the, that's number 16.
Judge.
Yep. Beg your pardon?
We may have missed an opportunity to correct something on our budget. Isn't there a time where we'll come back and review item by line item?
That's, that's what we did.
Okay. There was an oversight on my part.
We just passed the budget, so...
I know, I know. It won't change the net toll.
Okay, well...
And I made that motion because I was not on top of my game.
Okay, well, I'm, at this point, I'm not, I'm not aware of what, maybe we can talk about it after the meeting. I'm not sure. We, we passed the budget, and so...
Okay. It might be too late, but, okay.
And so, on 16, we will need, there's three motions that need to be made to approve the adoption of the proposed tax rate.
Okay.
That's coming up next.
Well, I'm gonna make this motion, and I'd like to have some time for discussion among the Commissioners Court members relative to this motion. But I move the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .4975 cents per hundred dollars of value, which is effectively a 6.92% increase in the tax rate.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. So, you want some discussion?
Uh, yeah, yes, sir. I, I really did. You know, just background material and things like that. This is the first time Brazos County's increased the tax rate in 10 years, or over 10, by anything of this significant an amount. And of course, I think from the legislative environment we find ourselves in, we're all aware of the whys as far as that goes. But, you know, this year is probably the last year that we're gonna be able to do things like a 3% cost of living adjustment that amounted to $2.4 million additional. Once you put the 1%, uh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Merit.
Merit, thank you. That's a significant increase. And then we had a really significant increase in healthcare this year.
Yes.
We, it was significant to the extent of $2.25 million that we decided to continue to provide for our 900-plus Brazos County employees. And I don't think that under the 3.5% revenue caps, we're gonna be able to look at doing those types of things in the future. So, I wanted to call that to everybody's attention. Basically, between the 3% cost of living adjustment for salaries and for the 1% merit, that's about $2.4 million. The significant increase in healthcare was about $2.25 million. And the .1, .0125 cents per hundred rate, just so you can take a look at that, it really only takes care of addition, of one-half of that amount.
Yeah.
If you take a look at the net revenue increase that's there. So, we are not going to be in the type of environment that we have been in in the last, last few years. I do believe that this tax rate, the total tax rate, particularly the maintenance and operations rate, will come down over the years coming because the 3.5% revenue cap, if we continue to grow as we have in the fast, in the past in Brazos County as far as valuations go, that maintenance and operation rate will likely come down. So, anyway, I wanted to just talk about that background. I'm, I'm reluctant to, to make a motion to adopt a tax rate that's an increase, so I wanted to have an opportunity to talk about the whys of and what the future looks like with regard to that, that motion to increase the adopted, increase the tax rate.
Good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. We need to second...
I move that the maintenance and operation portion of the 2019 county tax rate be .4475 cents per $100 of evaluation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. To set the maintenance and operation portion of the 2019 tax rate to .4475 per $100 valuation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number three is...
I have a motion that I'd like to offer. The motion is that we move that debt portion or the 2019 county tax rate be one, be 0.05 cents per $100 of value. And I'll restate that. I move that the debt portion or the 2019 county tax rate be set at .05 cents per $100 of value.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. To set the debt rate at .05 per $100 value?
Point 05.
Any more discussion?
Yes, Judge, I'd like to address this one, too. Yeah. Obviously, you know, our, our debt rate has come down from 8.44 cents per hundred, or .0844 cents per hundred, and it's now down to .05 cents per hundred. I think going forward, under the 3.5% revenue cap environment, it's gonna be important for us to look at using debt service. Fortunately, we are at a period of time where interest rates are significantly low, historically low, and in order for us to continue to provide the capital investments that we traditionally have saved money from our maintenance operations and paid by cash when we have saved up the amount, other than the things we have done where we've used debt service, I think that environment's gonna change some, too. Fortunately, we find ourselves in a low-interest rate environment where... Fortunately, we find ourselves in a low-interest rate environment where that makes sense to do from a time value of money perspective, when the cost of materials, design, construction, labor, acquisition of right-of-way with the case of roads, those types of things is going up faster than the interest rate where we can borrow the money and the fact that the debt service side of the equation is not limited by the 3.5% revenue cap. It makes that much more of a compelling way for us to get on behalf of... In fiscally conservative way, to get on behalf of the citizens of Brazos County as we grow what we need. So, I think that we're going to be looking... I would like for us, you know, I have advocated for using debt service for roads in the previous two budgets a little more strongly in this last year, but I think moving forward that that's something that we're going to really strongly going to have to consider.
That was widely discussed at our conference, too. Steve.
Yes. Okay. Sorry, lengthy comment there. I'm known for that, I guess.
All right. So, we've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. And then, we actually need to, I guess, pass the resolution itself, whereas Commissioners Court is responsible to levy the adoption of tax rate for Brazos County. It's now therefore resolved that Brazos County Commissioners Court... Brazos County Texas do hereby levy and adopt a tax rate of $100... Tax rate on the $100 valuation of Brazos County tax rate year 2019 as follows. .4475 for the purpose of maintenance and operations, .05 for the payment of principal and interest, and the total tax rate is .4975. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's rate. The tax rate will effectively raise... Will effectively be raised by 7.44% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $15.80. Be it therefore resolved the tax... Therefore resolved that tax assessor collector is hereby authorized to assess and collect taxes in Brazos County in accordance to with this set rate. And did we vote on that?
Not on the resolution.
I'll offer a motion that we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion made seconded to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. And then, number 17 is ratification of property tax increase due to the adoption of the budget that will require more revenue from property taxes than the previous year.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 18 is request approval for the Brazos County salary schedule for fiscal year 2020.
Second.
Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 19 is request review and approval of the 2020 merit policy.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 20 is personnel change status.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 21 is payment claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8018662 through claim number 8018872.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 22 is Juvenile Director's Report for Detention Population, Lyndon.
Good morning, Commissioner. We have 34 youth in detention at present time, 29 males and four females. Six of those kids are being contracted. Other counties are contracting with us for their youth. And we have 26 electronic monitors.
Thank you, Lyndon. Number 23 is Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. Sheriff.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have 648, 555 males, 93 females. We have 61 with electronic monitoring and 13 are pending.
Okay.
Population's gone down a little bit.
Thank you, Sheriff. Number 24 is Announcement of Interest Items and Possible Future Agenda Topics.
Judge, one thing. You know, we've got a burn van on. We've had some dry stuff, dry temperatures as far as that goes. But we've also got a whole lot of dust on unpaid roads. I mean, they're as dry as it is out there right now, there isn't a day that goes by that I don't get a call from somebody in Precinct 1, and I'm sure that there are lots of calls in Precinct 2 that are coming in, too, about dust. And I'm not as concerned about the dust being a nuisance, but I'm concerned about the dust being a safety hazard for someone. Because if you drive on some of the roads that I've heard about, if you've got another car who's maybe 100 yards, and you've got a calm day, like we've had a whole lot of calm days, and you typically do during dry days, there's a whole lot of dust, and it's a visibility and safety issue as well as public health issue. And I know that we're trying to conserve money by not doing that and trying to get roads paved, and that's our policy as far as that goes. But there comes a point where I think we need to say, this is the point where we say from a public safety perspective that it makes sense for us to go ahead and do something. So, I'd like to review our current policy on when we... When and how we use... Have Rodenbridge prepare for us and make a presentation to us the whats and whys because I'm concerned about the safety of some of our people traveling on... I know of some of the roads in Precinct 1 at least, and they're probably comparable situation in Precinct 2 and Precinct 4. Commissioner, I'm sorry, after the...
She doesn't have the problem. You don't have to apologize.
I think on redistricting, we're going to make sure you get some roads.
It's by design.
My precinct has... Population has increased dramatically, so we'll have to see how the 2020 census comes out.
But anyway, I did want to bring that up in our meeting and have a conversation about that because I do have a concern as far as quality of life and public safety that at times when we've had as many dry days in a row, that this gets to be a concern. And I understand the fiscal restraints on, you know, this is long-term what the solution is. My hope is that the long-term solution will be, as is what I mentioned earlier when I was talking about adopting the maintenance and operation and particularly talked about the debt service side of our equation. But I'd like to have a policy where we say, okay, at what point do we intervene with mitigation of dust on some of our unpaid county roads?
Yeah, and I mean, you know, I was a commissioner, too, for a good many years, and so the problem, of course, is that it costs lots of money to try to keep dust control down. And so, the choice was either you could spend your money on short term, and I'm talking about usually a month, a month and a half, and then you need to do it again, or try to continue to seal coat roads that meet the county standard to be seal coated.
Yes.
And that's where we've concentrated our money, is trying to seal coat roads as we were able to get, whether it's right-of-way or get moved... Get utilities moved and all those sorts of things that play into, you know, why you can seal coat a road and traffic count. I mean, that's... That really plays into it, too, because without actually having travel on the road, the road deteriorates. So, you need to have... There's a lot of things that factor into it.
Well, without getting too far into the topic of discussion, which is not an agenda item, I'd like for us to have a workshop or a period of time where we discuss this as an idea. And I think discuss it in a format where the people in Brazos County have an opportunity to participate, maybe also as far as that goes because, you know, I've got some people with health issues, and I understand that's where we need to go, but I would just like to put that as a future agenda topic, is that we look at our policy on that.
Okay.
And then, you know, by... Hopefully, by the end of October, that'll all go away. But I'm not counting on it.
All right. Any other announcement? Number 25 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. 26 adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.